You are watching Access La Porte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the August 19th meeting for the Trail Creek Town Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
If everyone can stand to join me in saying the pledge to open the meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, and welcome to the August meeting for the Town Council Trail Creek. Before we get started with our regular agenda, I would like to ask for a motion to amend the agenda, adding the planning and zoning board appointments as well as the Google Workspace Management Estimate.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. So we'll add those both under new business. Moving forward, has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from last month? And there was one correction already submitted. No one has any further corrections. I ask for a motion to approve the July minute.
I'll make a motion.
So thank you, Warren, and a second.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Laura. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And the fund report would be next. And Crystal, was there anything specific we should be looking for? Because I didn't notice anything that looked too out of alignment. Okay. I noticed we do have some opioid money, both restricted and unrestricted. That we need to plan to use or encumber, so. You're going to touch base on that when the budget comes up?
Yes, we will quickly just talk about the opioid fund when we get to.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions on the fund report or comment? Hearing none, can I have a motion to approve the fund report? Thank you, and a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And again, just for your information, we do have the bank reconciliation, yeah, reconciliation there. And this just basically shows that everything matches up on the fund report. You have that. Your bottom two figures should match, so. Any questions or comments on that? Nope. And then again, that's just for your information. Moving on to the payment of bills. Does anyone have any questions or comments there? There's a little question coming up here.
Yeah, what happened to South Pauls Durango?
That, that's an old bill that just recently came about, so we paid that. That was an insurance claim.
Okay, okay.
If there are no comments or questions on the accounts payable or payment of the bills, can I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve payment of bills.
And a second? Thank you. Any further questions or comments? One more minute, Laura. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Do we have any correspondence this month?
None.
Thank you. Then we will move forward to reports. I don't believe that we have anything to report from MS4 other than the videos continue to be on our website for outreach. Our attorney is not here this evening. He had another obligation that he had to attend to. However, he did send me the general provisions for code violations that we could collectively as a council need to consider, setting a more defined penalty schedule versus using such wide discretion on what there is now. And just to give you kind of an idea of what he's looking at, except for otherwise provided by law or ordinance, a person convicted of a violation of this code shall be punished by a fine not more than $2,500 for a first violation of this code and not more than $7,500 for a second violation or subsequent of the same provision. And so I think that what he's looking for is for us to pare that down into more of a code violation schedule rather than just leaving this so broad. So I have asked him to see if there are other towns that are similar in size and demographic to us that might have some suggestions on where we could start for that. That we were not reinventing the wheel. So that would be the update from our, our attorney. So we'll move on now to, to Ryan, our town engineer from Hassan Associates. How are you? Good evening.
Yeah, I don't really have that much to mention to you all tonight other than that we met with the contractor, Reeve Riley, who will be doing the Community Crossings Matching Grant paving project that's coming up soon. We met with them on the eighth. And right now it looks like the schedule for paving will be, or to start the work is September 8th. And we provided a more detailed schedule to Laura as well for posting on the website and so forth. But if there's anything else, any other questions or anything that you guys have about that project, we can follow up and get that to you. The part of that project will involve, a lot of that project will be on Johnson Road. So we'll be getting a maintenance of traffic plan from the engineer soon, or from, from the contractor soon, that will describe how they intend to do their operations to keep congestion things down while they're doing the work. So we'll fill in the town on that once we get that from the contractor. We, I see it on new business here. We do need authorization from Jennifer for the notice to proceed. There it is. And so that's pretty much the only thing left to do on that project to get it rolling. Other than that, I don't really have anything to update.
Sure. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Is there an estimated completion date for the paving?
I think it's going to be fairly rapid. I can't remember exactly what the dates are right now, but I think it's probably something like 30 days for substantial completion, which.
It was like October 2nd, starting.
That sounds right. Yeah, that's about 30 days or so. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And just as a reminder, I know we're doing the entirety of Johnson Road. And then what are the other roadways that we'll be working on?
There's going to be a little bit out here on Rainbow, I think. And there's going to be some on Wellnuts, on the eastern end of Wellnuts. And I know that there's at least a couple of other streets, but I can't recall what they are right offhand.
Okay, thank you.
Millie?
Yes. It's, it's basically all milling and then resurfacing with, with some patching, most likely on Johnson Road.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And Ryan, are you the liaison or the point person for all this? Like staying close with you or how do you?
Yeah, I mean, I, me and Sam Jose, Sam Jose will be probably very involved with that project. He may be the project manager, but you know, we're, we're in very close contact all the time, so. Either one of us, if you want to reach out to either one of us about it.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Moving on to our park department.
Okay, I have a report from Katrina Vito, the president of the Park Board. The Park Board would like to thank our recent sponsors for their support. And the playground sponsors include $2,500 from Triplex Plating Company. That's a gold sponsorship and $100 from Diane Papina, which is a community sponsor. And the Fall Festival sponsors, $500 from Bregy Nelson and James. They're platinum sponsors. $500 from Lauren Ullam. She's a lactation calls consultant. That is a platinum sponsor also. And $250 from MC Doors. That's a silver sponsor. Mulch was scheduled to be delivered on Friday, August 22nd. However, today I received an email from Kid Stuff Play Systems that their mulch supplier is having a certification issue with their mulch. Kid Stuff Play Systems will keep us updated as they are looking for another supplier. As a result, we will not need volunteers to spread the mulch on Saturday, August 23rd. The next Park Board meeting has been rescheduled for this Friday, August 22nd at 6:00 PM. We will be focusing primarily on the Fall Festival plans. That's it.
Okay. Anyone have questions for the Park Board?
Just keep us updated when the motion's going to show up. I definitely want to come and sit with that.
Then we will move on this evening to our building inspector. Okay. Nice to see you this evening. About planning and zoning.
So, well, I think we'll save that for the new business portion.
Okay.
For the, for people who would like to be on the board to come up and speak at the podium. And then we'll vote on that later.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to the police department then.
The only thing I've got tonight is I just wanted to go over 2023 Prosecutor Sean Fagan gave us a gracious donation of four radar post-mounted signs, which we put on Johnson Road. Last year in 2024, he did it again, gave us four more that we put throughout the town, two by Nelson Park, one on Pine Tree and one on Whipperwell. And that totaled around $32,000 for those two projects. This year I approached him and explained that our desktop computers are becoming outdated. And he was gracious enough, after several months of working with Dell Computers and Prosecutor Fagan's office, we received shipment of five new desktop computers. And a little value of just over $11,000. So I want to make sure I give him proper credit, thanking him, but we will also do a plaque like we have done in the past for him. Having done that, the initial plan was for us to simply take the computers, put the new ones in and just transfer stuff over. However, after speaking with PJ at Centric, who is working on the server and has done some work for us before, he is telling me that he can set us up with a small private network by using one of our old computers, the equipment that we have and transfer the data over. It'll be a file sharing network, which is what we need. He will also address some issues that we've been having with the copier and scanning. It's cru, it's crucial to our job when doing reports that we scan over because we have to hard sign documents and scan them into our report. So we have to have that scanner. So I talked to him and he gave me an estimate to set everything up, fix the scanning system that we've got and create that private network. The only problem is, is we didn't have this in our plan for this year. But I'm looking for some money, if it's available, to have Centric, which is PJ's company, come in and set us up for that. I got an estimate from him and it's $1,200. And that's creating the connection to the county that we need for what we call an IDAX, which is the, an NCIC folder, which is private information on a secure network between us and the county. So I'm asking the council if there is $1,200 available. Would like to ask you to allocate that to the police department so that we can hire Centric to do that work.
So do we have that maybe in the, in those capital developments? No?
And I apologize to Crystal in advance for not giving you heads. I just got this email around 4:00, 4:30.
What about the ARP? Can we use Lit Public Safety or ARP funding? And then we also have the opioid unrestricted.
The Lit Public Safety is a good idea based on the supplemental amount that you receive in May that we don't include in the budget ahead of time until we actually see what the money is coming in. So that kind of creates a little bit of a tiny, tiny rainy day fund within public safety on its own.
This is public safety, that would be an appropriate place.
Right. Revenue and that is so, so small. You use that for your phones already and in a couple of years, that's going to be gone. ARP option as well, that's got a little bit more strings attached to it for you to just document the change in the plan.
Right.
So Lit Public Safety would be the fastest and easiest.
Okay. So what I would like to do is propose, and then we'll need a motion for this, maybe not to exceed for him. So you said the total on that estimate was what again?
1.2.
The total actually came in a little bit higher, but there was Microsoft software in there that we don't need. So I subtracted that out, came in at 1,200 even.
Okay.
So he's going to have to readjust it to take out that, those four licenses that we don't need because we already have Microsoft Office 365 or whatever it's called.
And it, it won't go over that, is what you're telling me?
That's the, that's the quote he gave.
That amount, that's what he's going to get paid, just to make that very clear.
If not, I'll see you next month. That's what he, that's, you know, he came in, he looked at the project and that's what he proposed.
Okay. And so if we can, we would be asking them for a motion to approve payment to Centric, thank you. Centric IT LLC and the amount of $1,200 to install a server, a network server at the police station and do the repairs as noted on his estimate.
I'll second it.
Is that sufficient for your motion before we?
It is, but it's not install a server. It's to convert an old computer, which is an asset. And I want to make sure you know that it's an asset we have that we're.
Change the motion then, so that's the motion to pay Centric to convert the asset that we already have, being one of the old computers into a server.
Correct.
Along with other.
Files shares.
File shares, so. So the motion's on the table. We have a motion by Warren. We have a second by Laura. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that funding will come from the Lit Public Safety Fund.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Crystal and Trista, thank you very much for addressing that real quick. And again, I apologize, put you both on the spot.
Before you leave, I'm going to put you on the spot for Halloween. Are you planning to do the same outreach that you've done at the park for the last few years?
Yes. The goal is to get donations from specific individuals, anybody that's interested in donating candies and, and money towards hot chocolate. I didn't bring my other phone to tell you, it's, it's a lot of, you know, it could be upwards of 750 up to $1,000 between candy and hot chocolate and supplies. And the budget is very thin this year, so.
And check on what you expect the pricing to be, then we can start to solicit donations from there.
Very good.
So if you would do that post?
Sure.
Or however you'd like to, to start to solicit funds?
Sure. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Anyone else? Not at this time.
Again, thank you. We always appreciate your support.
Thank you for the job you and your, your crew do.
Thank you. I'll pass that along.
Bringing up our street department. Hello, Mr. Baker.
I don't have a whole lot to share. Leaf Machine is off, getting repairs and going through all that stuff as we get ready for the fall. Short of that, we're just kind of waiting for the stuff for the parks to come in. I guess we're waiting a little bit longer, so we have other things to do around town, so. Other than that, I really have.
Nice, quiet, quiet for you. The flower boxes out here look nice. Those were compliments of an Eagle Scout candidate that we have. And I believe he also has a little bit of extra funding he's going to provide for us to do extra planting, so.
Oh, is that right? I'll let Rob know.
To be able to do some other perennials or something else in the spring, so we can keep it pretty year round.
Gotcha. Okay. Yeah.
We weren't going to talk about that. Thank you very much, Debbie Downer. Okay.
I've, I've already been going through stuff. It's, everything's looking really good right now.
Intact. Thank you so much for everything you guys do. And then we'll move on to NERC for this evening.
Again, I have two meetings coming up this Thursday, so I will report next month.
Okay. All right, and that brings us up to new business. And we have the notice to proceed for the CCMG Street Project, which I have right here. And this will give us permission to start the work on September 8th, 2025, with Reeve Riley Construction as the contractor and Hassan Associates as the engineer. And we're looking for a motion to give me permission to sign this so that we can proceed.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Hearing none, opposed, motion carries. So I'll sign that now. Moving on, we have a pre-budget review or preview.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So the pre, pre-budget preview, and I'll give the floor over to Krista and Crystal for that.
Thank you. I asked Crystal to, to the agenda, that we could share some information with you. We've gotten just very recently, last week, some updates from the DLGF regarding Senate Bill, Senate Enrolled Act 1, the property tax reduction, right, to the the residents, which obviously flows through to towns and cities. We have some recent predictions on that that I wanted to share. And then just provide you with some documents that you can start to take a look and explain what you have. I think Crystal emailed them too, and then we've got printed copies for you tonight. I'll explain as we go through just very, very briefly tonight where some of the things are for you to keep an eye on. And then you can have time to study and, and we'll talk in more depth then at the workshop that hopefully we can get scheduled yet today. First off, I want to explain that the, at least initial estimates on the property tax loss to the town are coming from two different places. Well, I should say, yeah, no, that's fine, two different places. The Legislative Service Agency, LSA, is the arm of the government in the State House that helps value for the legislators what the implications might be financially. So the initial prediction from there was that the town of Trail Creek over the next three years, 26, 27, 28, would lose on average $53,000 a year in property taxes. That number comes from a firm that kind of specializes in the analysis of assessed valuation of each particular parcel in a town or county, city, government unit. They compare that against circuit breakers and they go through it. It's a very lengthy involved process. So that's what the state was using. The DLGF then released, I think it was on Friday, their own estimate, which is higher. And you'll see that as we go through the fund projection in a few moments. We believe in our assistance from our firm with different towns and cities across the state, the northern half of the state, that the number will probably be even a little bit less than what the LSA has put out based on our review so far of different circuit breakers. And of course, this all comes from the new homestead deductions that are imposed through this legislation. We won't know that for sure though until next April, which is already a quarter through your, a third through your budget year. So in the meantime then, we just have to be careful and conservative and use those numbers in our head, have some good planning, and then for the rest of the year of 2026, you'll be able to respond a little bit more real time once those real numbers come in. Some good news though in all of that, despite the fact that that's about a 10% reduction in expected property tax, is that the state is still allowing you for the 4% max levy growth. Every year they decide that the amount of property taxes you receive is set at a number and they decide every year what that growth can be. They've still said for 26, it can be a 4% growth. So for this year of 2025, your general fund levy was set at just under $545,000. That will grow next year by 4%, up to the 565 that we'll look at on the fund projection for 2026. But then that number would be reduced by this loss of property tax predicted by the legislation. So the drop won't be quite as bad because of that levy growth, but yet circuit breakers will kick in. And of course, there's a whole teeter totter between assessed value and how the rate works out. And we'll work through that a little bit more in detail at the workshop. As well, that predicted $53,000 loss is across the three funds that receive your property taxes. So it's general fund, which receives about 75% of your property taxes. And then your MVH fund receives about 20% and your CCD fund receives around six, five and a half to six. So proportionally, you can plan that that circuit breaker amount, this 53,000, could be proportioned in the same fashion. If you decide to reportion a little bit differently, we can do that as well. So we can talk about that more at the workshop. The documents then that I asked Crystal to provide to you that I had gotten drafted, of course, the fund projection. In the 26 projected column on this general fund on the top is where the DLGF's circuit breaker is listed for you. You'll see that that's about 70,000 more than this current year, from 72 up to 174. So again, we can look in that more in depth, but the places with the yellow highlights are things that we'll talk about further. For this next year, they did just earlier last week predict that some of the income tax that you receive will drop slightly, which is that lighter yellow 93,000. It's about 10% less than what we thought it would have been if we had followed the previous trends. And then the yellow on the far right side is because part of SB1 is that as of 2028, the income tax structure will change. And we can talk about that more at the next meeting. But that will be a local vote or a county vote for you all because you're under 3,500 in population. Apparently you're not allowed to make your own decisions for some things. I'll keep my soapbox reserved for another time. So the fund projections you've seen a couple of years now, they follow the same kind of pattern. If you see the yellow MVH, it's because of the property tax reduction issue. And make some notes for questions and we can, can add more information in at the next session. Then the other two documents that I had drafted out were the expenditures and the revenues. This is the same format that we gave you last year, so you can see some historical numbers behind it. The expenditures, I did not make any assumptions or, or predictions on what they should be. It is simply for you to have some numbers to look at, a levelized budget, with the exception of the payroll numbers, which are a 3% raise, which you'll see noted on the top right corner. So I'm in no way commenting on any of the numbers here. I just put them in so that you could see what they total and then give you and the department heads time to review that in the future. Those light yellow boxes then are where the 3% raise is applied. Um, those light yellow boxes then are where the three percent raise is applied. Uh, of one quick note on page four is that the MVH line, all of the employees are paid out of that particular line. And so that raise is applied to that group as a whole. But of course, your salary ordinance dictates as to um, just as with the clerk's office part-time employee, your salary ordinance will dictate full-time and part-time raises and what is decided there. But for now, the values are there, so you can see. Last thing then as to the revenues, um, they are a little conservative, but they will match up with the fund projection. Of course, you don't want to overpredict planning and building uh, permit fees. And so we try to be careful with those. Um, the property tax lines that you see in the revenues at the top of each of the respective funds do include the higher DLGF circuit breaker number. So that again is extra conservative. So for tonight, that's really, I just wanted to get this in front of you so you had some time if you wanted to look at it before the workshop. I also reprinted the most recent capital plan. Um, hoping that we can talk about that during the workshop and get uh, that updated for what has been spent so far this year. Um, anything that maybe is deferred now into next year and be able to then use that to help inform your decisions on the budget and future projects or capital items that are coming uh, up in requests. And then the last item was the opioid settlement. Um, it's a little bit of an awkward document, which I want to explain quickly. But what I wanted to do was at least get in front of you what the actual revenues have been twenty two through twenty five. We just received another dispersment last week. Um, the one expenditure that you show there is noted down below. In the the group of three uh, footnotes at the bottom, it's the middle one that the poor county had released too much money or the proportion was wrong or something. And so that was simply a return to them. That was not a true expenditure on the town's part. So actual revenues are there. Then if we simply took the current balance, twenty twenty five's balance, divided that by the future thirteen years that this program is supposed to exist for, you could spend a hundred ninety four a year. And then in the restricted column, the same thing, if you took the current balance, three thousand two twenty three. The reason I did that is because your revenues have not been as predicted from the state. And then I will put a call into them tomorrow. I have another client I want to ask the question about. You see on the restricted half on the right side, twenty four and twenty five, you have not received um, any dispersment yet. And the spreadsheet that the AG's office sent out is supposed to be a minimum amount that you would have received. So I want to check and find out why you didn't receive what you should have. Some other communities have received more than what was estimated. And so I want to be able to have those answers for you. If then that gets kind of rectified and you receive the revenue that you're supposed to, then the expenditure can be increased, obviously, because you should have then this extra money that's showing on the cash cash flow column. Normally, the cash flow would be an actual addition subtraction and everything would tie out. You come to zero at the bottom. Right now, we can't quite do that yet because I'm not confident on why you haven't received the revenue you expected. Um, certainly you are not tied to having a a levelized expenditure. You could spend all this full amount now and just wait and see what comes in next. This was simply um, letting you know kind of how it would divide out if you wanted some kind of regular program that you were going to implement. And so again, food for thought for the workshop.
So as a reminder for everyone, um, the restricted funds can be used for.
Yeah, and let me pull up um, the list here really quickly.
Because that makes a difference.
It does. Unrestricted absolutely can be any town expense that you prefer. And the restricted. Think of anything um, fairly broadly that can respond to the opioid addiction. Uh, so uh, Narcan kits for police vehicles, volunteer fire department. Anything that helps remediate the drug addiction. Some companies have used it for some counseling uh, for social workers to be involved in the police department uh, to assist with various people that the police interact with. Obviously, the current funds that you have don't unfortunately pay for something like that. Various grant programs that help address addiction, again troublesome with the amount that you have. Other medication assisted treatment that is often given through the county health department. There are some various screenings that can be done in relation to the drug addiction for pregnant postpartum women. Um, expanding treatment for neonatal abstinence syndrome. And that I'm reading, I don't know exactly what that is, but that's on the list. Expanding a form of handoff programs or recovery services, meaning getting into treatment, transition and those kinds of things. Um, I can print, this particular document is fifteen pages long and it's a bulleted point. Treatment for incarcerated population prevention programs. Uh, just the red service programs.
I think that would be sufficient. We we could read through it before we go to the workshop.
Yep. But the restricted again focused on that addiction portion.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions or or discussion about this? Anything further for the budget review? No? Okay. That's pretty thorough. Thank you. I appreciate having all that information early so we can have a chance to take a look at it first. Um, moving on, since we've done those two, we've got the Police Advisory Board next. So um, I know we have three candidates who, if you bear with me, I'll try to pull up their. Okay, perfect. Thank you. And for the um, for the code, the way that it works is the Police Department Advisory Board should be appointed by the Town Council as follows. Two of the three members uh, would be appointed by the council and one of the members would be appointed by the town marshal. And so the three members, the names that have been given to us would be John Dudek would be the choice of the town marshal. Kurt Catterlin and Steve Botsch tube would be the council appointments and those would be appointments that have been for several years uh, and they would like to continue to serve. This is normally something we would do in January. However, it was not noted in the minutes. And so we wanted to make sure that we had everything cleaned up and done this month. So what we're looking for is a motion to approve the appointment of John Dudek as the town marshal's uh, Police Advisory Board appointment along with Kurt Catterlin and Steve Botsch tube as the council appointments at the Police Advisory Board.
Madam President, may I ask a question as to intention?
Yes, you may.
So given the terms, um, and given that we we think you may have appointed, but men's don't reflect, you could make that retroactive so that this year counts and then that they could have the full term.
Yes, because it is a four-year term.
And none of them are changing, correct? All of those members. So you could make it retroactive so that this entire year would be covered in three additions.
Thank you for amending my motion. I appreciate that. I'll hand this back to Laura. So then that would be the motion that it's retroactive back to January with a four-year term for each of the three. Do we have that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. In a second.
I'll second it.
Tonight. Um, so we've got a motion and a second. You have a question?
I just, I want to, how how long is the term? Twenty nine?
Twenty nine. Four years. Yeah, go twenty five, twenty six, twenty seven, actually twenty eight, twenty nine, we would reappoint.
Okay. Well, I'm just trying to figure it out from the website.
All right, understood.
Okay, got it.
So we've got a motion and a second on the table. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. That would still be myself. We did appoint my.
Oh, yeah.
We did do that. Uh, moving on, the next point of business would be monthly management of Google Workspace Accounts for the town. And again, we're looking at having Centric IT do this. Um, mainly because we've put all this on Laura and it's, you know, nice of you to volunteer, but we want to make it official with a person who actually takes that and does that just on a regular basis. Um, and so this would give Centric IT, who's been doing a lot of our IT work and has done a fantastic job, um, management of our Google Workspace Accounts and domain administration for the town. At a cost of forty dollars. Is that monthly forty dollars? It does say monthly management. So I just wanted to verify that it was forty dollars a month, so four hundred and eighty dollars per year. And where would that money be coming from in the budget? Okay. I just want to make sure we're not going to run short on that because I know we pay for several other things there as well. Okay. Okay. And if that needs to be adjusted, we can amend that later in the year. Um, so we would need a motion to approve the um, monthly service fee for Centric to manage all of our Google Workspace Accounts.
I'll make that motion.
We've got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So do they want my username and password passed on to?
We can just, oh, yeah, they'll contact you directly. So that will be approved. This is not, no, this is just the town. The police department does maintain their own separate account. Thank you for the clarification. And moving on to the Planning and Zoning Boards then. So we have three names who had that have been submitted and Mr. Pizarro, I'll let you have the floor.
So we had Wayne Brantley, who spoke at the meeting last month. Um, and so we would consider him to be on the board. And then I, uh, Pavel Novak, I believe, is in the the audience this evening. If you could step up to the podium, tell us a little bit about yourself and uh.
We'll ask that you state your name and address as well. Name and right, name and address.
Yep. Uh, good evening, everyone. My name is Pavel Novak. I live in Torrey twenty one East Michigan Boulevard in Trail Creek in this town. I am also member of the the Moose Club, where we helping the childrens. And uh, I would like to take this position. I have the some construction, extraction, uh, construction experience. And uh, I would like to help the community and um, I'm willing to learn some new things and and um, and also I keep eye on the on um, uh, the city ordinances.
Okay.
This is what this uh, are about.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Novak? No? No? Okay.
I lived here one year and uh, owned the property for many years before. I built the house during the pandemic.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Novak.
Thank you. And then we also had Robert Will Gorecki, but uh, he said he's he has some some personal issues going on right now, other things he's busy with. So I asked him to be at the meeting this evening. He wasn't able to make it, obviously. So.
Does he still want to be considered?
I don't believe so at this.
Okay.
Um, so we only have two people for the the Planning, Zoning Board right now, which is Wayne Brantley and Mr. Novak.
Okay.
Madam President, I I have confirmed one other that I know most of you are familiar with, but Mike Moldauer is another who me asking if it's still necessary. So if you're finding members.
Could you give us a little bit of background on Mr. Moldauer?
Oh, Mr. Moldauer grew up in this community, lives here, raised his family here, is also a business owner. Um, so pretty pretty active, uh, definitely a a different perspective in terms of the businesses as well as um, his interests, business interests, sorry, and and a resident. So I um, he's been heavily involved in the past as his children grew up and done some charity auctions, been involved with the park. So I I think I certainly would recommend him, but we're the decision.
So are you speaking on his behalf, basically?
Yeah, I'm I'm recommending that if you need members, that I believe that he would be a good addition to that and is as you've seen, it's it's difficult. Absolutely interested. Confirm that. And I know that I had some discussions with Pete before and wasn't able to confirm, but that there's another name that if you were inclined to consider. You could count on him. And as you found, it's really tough for people to volunteer and step up. Moldenhour.
Mike.
It's M O L D E N H K U E.
Thank you. And ma'am, I would ask that if you're going to speak that you um, state your name and and address before you address the council and wait until there there's questions, if you might, if you wouldn't mind. Because we do have to maintain a certain order here. Yes, it is. But thank you. That's okay. I just want to make sure that we maintain order in the in the meeting because otherwise things tend to get a little out of control and if we if we keep it to the, yeah.
So those will be the three names, then Wayne Brantley, Pavel Novak and Mike Moldauer would be the three names then that we would have for the Planning and Zoning Board.
And then we would reappoint in January. So with that, we'll ask for a motion to approve those three names for the Planning and Zoning Boards. Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion or questions?
So uh, the only other discussion I would have is we would have to schedule a meeting. They would have to then meet and decide the board president and.
And you're the liaison.
I am the liaison, correct. So that's the only other thing I would like to put out there.
Okay, so we do have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Would you like to notify all three of it?
Or?
Or Crystal?
Crystal.
So if you've got contact information, we can pass that along to Crystal and make sure that gets done.
Yep.
And the two of you can work with the new board members to get that meeting scheduled.
No, you know, no, no, you don't have.
No.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so we have planning and zoning board members. All right.
Yes.
And I believe that that actually carries us all the way through our agenda. Um, do we have any public comment this evening? Any public comment this evening? Okay. Any clerks' comments this evening? Thank you. Any council comments this evening? Other than myself? No comments from the council?
We're good.
I go, the only uh, announcement I'd like to make is that this is, uh, there's an overdose awareness week being planned in Michigan City. They're doing a walk on the twenty eighth. So if anyone is so inclined, uh, we did put up an overdose awareness walk flyer that's on our our community bulletin board out here. And then the uh, mayor's office of Michigan City is coordinating that event. Yes, you have a question? Thank you, Paula. So overdose awareness, um, it's a mental health initiative that they're taking up as part of their opioid funding for Michigan City. And they're just hosting, this is their first event of this kind. So I don't know that they're really sure on what to expect from this either. Um, but they, there is a flyer out there that has a little bit more information. If you wanted specific information, I don't have that. You'd have to contact the mayor's office for Michigan City. So, right, so there's specific funds that we have. Some are restricted for use. And then there's a laundry list, it sounds like, of what we can use that for and cannot use that for. And then there are some that are unrestricted. And for us, because we're a very small town, those are very small amounts. Now, but we will get those funds for several years to come. And it's just a matter of where we can allocate those few hundred dollars to. Okay, I know that doesn't really give you a a specific answer to your question, but that's at this time, that's the best I can unfortunately do. Um, if there are no other comments from the council, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
And a second?
Okay.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Have a great evening, everyone. We'll see you in September. Aye. Thank you. Have a great evening, everyone. We'll see you in September.